The Locksburg Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, May 23. Can we please have the roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Tom.
Present.
Commissioner Williamson.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Wagstaff.
Present.
And Commissioner Swisher is absent tonight. So you have a quorum.
All right, thank you. So do we have anyone on Zoom? No.
Attendees in the audience on Zoom.
Okay, great, thank you. So do we have any public comments on matters not on the agenda? I know we have one member in the audience tonight. Hi. I'm assuming you don't have anything you want to raise other than what's on the agenda tonight? Okay, just want to say hi. All right, in that case, can we jump into the planning director's report, please?
I have nothing to report tonight. Oh, well, I guess I could report that the city council will be considering the appeal of 93 Magnolia on June 7. But that's it.
Okay.
Actually, is the appeal based on the in and out driveways or?
The issue raised by the appellant is concern about having the two driveway cuts.
Right.
And we did receive a letter from someone else concerned about tree removal, but they're not one of the appellants.
Do we know the appellant?
James Holmes. Yeah.
Okay. Right, thank you. In that case, we'll open the public portion of the hearing tonight. We have the several matters to talk about, and the first one is PLN 236 for a conditional use permit at 2130 Redwood Highway. If we could please have the staff report, Jackie, thank you.
Yes, so the applicants are requesting a conditional use permit at 2130 Redwood Highway, which is the Marin Mobile Home and RV Park to operate a mobile food trailer as an accessory use to the existing mobile home park that is there. So the project is located to the east of Highway 101 in the area formerly known as the Green Bray East. This is now referred to as the Redwood Highway area. It is located in the front area of the existing Marin Mobile Home Park. This is zoned MHP District, Mobile Home Park District, and it is sandwiched in between light industrial to the north and to the south. The proposed use, as I previously mentioned, would be an accessory commercial and service use to the allowed allowed mobile home park, and additional parking would not be required for the proposed use. The applicant has provided a project description. The mobile food trailer would provide takeout service only with grab and go food, soft drinks, no alcoholic beverages served. They'd be open Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. There would be no seating on site. There would be no delivery or shipping to the site. There would be no exterior lighting because they're closing at 3:00 p.m. There is no open flame cooking that is proposed, and the management of Marin Park has dedicated six parking spaces for the proposed use. One of the spaces, the trailer would be parked, and the other spaces would be available for people who are coming to use the trailer, but as I said previously, the code does not require additionally parking for an accessory use. This top image here shows the site plan. So you can see this is the food truck. It's 18 feet long by 18 feet wide. It would not extend into the public right of way. It is within the boundaries. That was verified by a survey. Below it is an interior layout of the food truck itself. This was required by the fire department. The conditions of approval required the applicant would not be able to use a generator, that they would have permanently routed power source, which is shown here on their site plan. Additionally, they must obtain the necessary permits from Marin County Environmental Health and Safety Department. Marin County would be regulating their food handling and safety, potable water and wastewater sanitization and equipment. Everything would be self-contained in the site. They have a hard water connection, but my understanding is that they would be collecting their own gray water and utilizing the RV dump station for disposing of that. They would not have a sewer hookup. The fire department does have several conditions of approval, which have been provided in the staff report. As such, I am recommending that we add one more condition of approval, that the applicant must provide a proof of a fire inspection prior to issuance of a business license or prior to operating the use, which is what should be on the rest of the slide. These are the required findings for the conditional use permit. Staff has made the findings to support this project. The subject site is located in the MHP zoning district that primarily permits the operation of mobile home parks, the associated recreational uses and incidental non-commercial uses. The proposed food trailer would be considered a commercial use accessory to the mobile home park and would only be able to operate with the approval of the use permit. The use has been determined to be compatible with the existing primary use and will provide an amenity to the persons who reside in the mobile home park as well as out-of-town visitors who utilize the RV portion of that. The mobile home park itself supports quite a large number of spaces. They have 89 mobile home spaces and 87 RV spaces. It's supported by a park office, laundry facilities, a pool. So they do have a mix of permanent residents as well as people who use that. I learned that this is the closest RV park to the city. It is quite popular for people who are coming to visit San Francisco. Additionally, the use is compatible with, consistent with the general plan based on the submitted business description, discussions with the applicant, and discussions with the property owner and manager of the Marin Park. The food trailer would be consistent with the land use description. It would not reduce any of the availability of affordable housing. It's not displacing any of the spaces that would be used for housing. Likewise, it's not displacing any parking that's used for any of the housing. The parking that is currently available, I think this image gives you a good, if you see here on the bottom, this is actually the food trailer itself, and this is the proposed placement of it. The other parking spaces are used for storage of other vehicles. It's kind of an overflow space. The site is adequately parked. Each space supports one, at least one parking space per mobile home or RV space, and then throughout the site, there's additional parking. Further, the proposed use will maintain the mix of retail service, industrial and residential uses in the Green Bray East area, which is part of the current general plan land use goal number one. Staff finds that these would not be detrimental to health, safety, morals, comfort, or convenience, nor the general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. No evidence has been presented that this would result in any unusual activity, excessive noise, production of noxious fumes, or hazardous materials or waste. Additionally, because they have to get outside permitting, they're going to be held to the regulations of Marin County to operate their mobile food facility. And staff also find that this would not be detrimental to the general welfare. And with that, my recommendation is that the necessary findings can be made to approve the conditional use as proposed. Subject to the findings, conditions of approval, categorical CEQA exemption, and the additional condition that will require the proof of fire inspection prior to operation and/or issuance of the business license. And that concludes my staff report.
Just one quick question. Is it just for the people in the mobile park? Or is it for walk-in, drive-in, other people that might want to get their lunch there?
It would be open to everyone. It's outside of the fenced-in area of the park. I think the main motivation here is to provide an amenity to those people. There's only a few food service places in the area, but the applicant has expressed that they also hope to be able to provide service to the people who work in the area. There is workforce of people who are working at the industrial area, which is Ready Mix Concrete is just behind the subject site. So it would be for both.
Thank you. I had two quick questions too. When I had a look at it, behind the trailer, it looked like there was a railing, a green railing or gate. Is that an access point for the trailer park?
My understanding is that behind that, it's like a storage yard. It's not something that's utilized by the residents themselves. I actually have the site pulled up on Google Earth, which I think helps.
I guess I wanted to check we're not blocking an access point here.
Now, this is, so this is the site. Like I said, this is a storage yard. Maybe the applicant can speak to how this gate opens up and how they're using this space, but it's not based on what I've seen on my site visits. It's not something that's utilized by the residents. It's something that's utilized by management where they're storing some of their equipment and things like that. This right here is a residence.
Okay. But if there's a fire at the park, people have other ways to get out.
Yes. So if you see here, this is the main thoroughfare access. So people who are entering the park, who live in the park, enter here and turn in here. No one's going through this space.
Okay. And then the other question I had was in your conditions of approval in the expiration of permit number six, this is a two-year approval. I just wanted to clarify this was correct. So the permit approval will expire two years from the effective date of this approval if the school operations have not been undertaken. Was that?
That's just a typo.
Is that just a typo?
I'll correct that.
Okay, great.
But it is a two-year expiration.
It is still a two-year, okay. All right, that was the only question I had. So is the applicant available to present?
Works? Oh, good evening, anyone. Thank you for letting me stand right here. So I'm a little nervous. I'm the first time, okay? Well, yes. Well, the question is.
Could we have your name, please?
My name is Hector. Jacobo.
Okay. And you represent the O N O?
I'm the owner of the food trailer.
Okay.
And the reason was all the whole thing is just because I thought I were on the first place buying it and Home Depot was sitting in the area, and they closed it down. So I think it was okay, I will keep it there. But then the contractor was not able to renew it because she wasn't cleaning completely. And then I ended up buying it, and then I spoke to the manager on the RV Marin Park. He come up with the idea, there will be a good thing to have it on there where people, a lot of workers around it, they don't have enough time to eat. I say, well, can maybe, you know, give you a space to sit here and then provide to the community. They eat the lunch quickly. So instead of they going to Canal or San Rafael, all the places, it's a little further than that. So I thought, okay, it'll be a great thing, but let me try to see if, you know, they let me have it here for first place before I do anything else wrong. So that's the only reason I'm here, you know, to see if I can able to provide for others. And the same thing, provide, I mean, what do I call it, employment to others they needed. Any other question?
Maybe you could just address what's happening behind the trailer, is that gate?
Behind the trailer, they have their own equipment there, park, but they walk through the containers to the back. So they only open it when they need to pull up like a big thing, like a big machine through the gate. During the day, they tell me they can, they close, they open it sometimes I ate. But since I'm gonna be there, they're not gonna open it until they need to be like, at the end of the day, when nobody's blocking it. So if that thing is operated, they're gonna be keeping close.
So even with your trailer there, it doesn't block the gate?
Doesn't block the gate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
So the trailer would be there, I think I saw somewhere, like 80% of the time, it's movable.
Yeah, it's movable. It's self-contained, so it's movable. So we're thinking about maybe 80%. And then the other 20%, when events come, we're able to pull it and take it to the events and then bring it back to the same spot.
And this is your, you own the trailer?
Yes.
You do it?
Yes.
Any more questions? No, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair Chalmers, I do just want to add, I know the property owner's not here today. I did speak on the phone with the property owner at length, and they're very supportive of the project.
That's good to know, thank you. Do we have anyone on Zoom that might want to make a comment? No one's called in?
Audience, but no hands up.
Okay. Okay, in that case, I guess we can bring it to the commission for discussion. Does anyone want to go first? Otherwise, I'll just go down the line.
I'll go first.
Okay.
Sounds like a great idea. I might even go there myself. So that's.
Fully supported.
Yeah.
Okay. Liam?
Yep, echo that. I think it sounds like a good deal to me.
Great. Max?
Yeah, super simple and very synonymous with San Mataditos in Spain.
Yes, so I agree too. I'm fully in support of this. And just to follow protocol, I think we can make the findings which are listed in the staff report. I fully agree with what you've listed in here. So I don't need to reiterate that. So I think we can go straight to a vote. Somebody want to make a motion first? Anyone like to make a motion?
Okay, I would move approval of the conditional use permit for 2130 Redwood Highway for a food truck.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Oh, there's a 10-day appeal period. So you can't begin until, unless someone, just in case someone appeals within the next 10 days. But then the decision will be final if no one appeals.
Oh, should we condition that on, is the last condition of approval that Jackie added about the fire inspection? Do we need to add that right now, or did we discuss that in the discussion?
We could add that, I think, because it's subject.
If you want to be clear that you're recommending approval based on the findings and conditions in the staff report as well as the additional condition that Jackie presented.
So I'll add that to my motion, provide proof of fire department review, inspection.
Prior to starting operation.
Prior to, yes.
In addition to the existing conditions of approval that in the staff report? Okay, so we'll just make that correction to the motion.
Should we vote again?
Yeah, I think so. Hit into one second.
I'll second. I'll second the new one.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you, Liam, for pointing that out.
Again.
All right, thank you. So we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the text 2226 for the ADU ordinance, revised ordinance. Leece, do you want to present on that? Alex?
Yes, let me share. I have a brief PowerPoint that I prepared. Okay, so good evening, commissioners. The item before you is text amendment 22-26, which proposes changes to the zoning code based off of new ADU laws passed by the state. As a refresher, you did hear this item at your last meeting where you provided staff direction regarding floor area ratio and lot coverage bonuses, and then voted to continue the item. Staff have made further changes to the, further language changes based off of the commission's feedback provided at the last meeting. The primary change being that there are additional code amendments now proposed to increase the allowed lot coverage and floor area for a lot equal to the size of a proposed ADU or JADU, so long as the unit is 850 square feet in size or less. As noted in the staff report, both sections also include potential alternatives which would prohibit these concessions if the ADU is interconnected to the main home or, in some cases, there's alternatives written in there if you want them to apply only to the state-exempt ADUs, which are the ADUs that are detached, less than 800 square feet in size and less than 16 feet tall. And in any case, in all cases, excuse me, any further construction would be held to the FAR and lot coverage limitations established in the respective section of the zoning code for that particular property. Staff did receive comments from the city attorney yesterday evening with a couple of further modifications suggested that are relatively minor. First, that the definition of floor area be amended to just include the garage, which is how it reads when you read the definition section of the zoning code. And second, that the definition for proposed primary residence be removed as the state may question it and question why it's there when they review the ADU ordinance after it is approved. And lastly, staff did work with Chair Chalmers on further text-specific changes to the ADU ordinance. Many of them are to ensure clarity and future-proof the ordinance in case a department name or a job title changes. And so staff recommends that the commission discuss the proposed changes and forward a recommendation of approval to the city council. This concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. So I've read the code. I just had a couple of questions on the alternate language. But before we discuss that, does anyone else on the commission have anything they want to question, add, change?
I'm not sure I want to change anything, but I'm having a bit of problem with F, which is floor area limits. And so I'm so it says the maximum floor area of 850 square feet. In other words, you're, I'm not sure, you know, so an ADU is 800 square feet. And to me, it's confusing, this part of it, because it seems to indicate you could have 1,000 square feet if it's two bedrooms. Or maybe I'm just reading it incorrectly. And I don't know why that's in there. You know, how you can, you could get a two-bedroom in 800 square feet if you're clever enough, particularly if you have 16-foot height limits.
So those, I mean, those specific, the sizes that are tied to the number of bedrooms, that's taken straight out of the state law. They established the, you know, a studio unit can be a max of 850 and so on.
But why would that be involved with the ADUs?
So they require us to allow larger-sized ADUs for two-bedroom or larger units. However, we don't have to give them extra floor area for that. So if someone came in for, let's say, a 1,000-square-foot two-bedroom ADU, part of that's going to eat into their maximum floor area. I don't know if that's helpful. So someone, people do do two-bedroom, eight, two-bedroom ADUs within the 800 square feet because it doesn't, like, because we have to approve those ones, but.
Right, so, but maybe in that floor area limit section, it should say somewhere the maximum allowed for the ADU is 800 square feet.
But it's not. So we have to allow 1,000 square feet for a two-bedroom ADU or a larger square.
Or, or maybe it doesn't count in your floor area. It's.
So under the floor, the floor area section, either as it's written today or, which is right above that section, or as proposed, we would only let them go 800 square feet more. So we only have, if someone's over FAR, we only have to approve an 800-square-foot unit?
850 now, right? Or is it 800 still?
And, or 850. If you, if you'd like it all to be consistent with this paragraph F, you can make everything 850, so it's just, there's not 800s and 850s. But if someone wants to build a two-bedroom ADU that's 1,000 square feet, they could, for example, ask for a floor area exception, or if they had extra floor area left, they could do a 1,000-square-foot ADU.
So what you're saying is between the 850 and the 1,000, it gets.
It's counted towards their floor.
It picks up by the floor area.
They don't get any, they can't get an exception for that.
But why have it as floor area limits? I mean, if you, you could also do, you know, a 1,400-square-foot two-bedroom. And you would only get 850 square feet.
Well, you can't do a 1,400, you can, well, there's so many wrinkles to this law. But for, if you're converting an existing space, you could make the ADU as large as you'd like. So let's say you have a 3,000-square-foot basement. You're allowed to do a 3,000-square-foot ADU. But if you're building, let's say, a new detached ADU that's two bedrooms, we can say you can't be greater than 1,000 square feet. Like, we can have those as limits.
So this is my understanding, and you tell me if this is correct, is that if you're going to do a two-bedroom ADU, you can't go over 1,000 square feet for it to be administratively approved. But only up to 850 will get exemption from.
Yeah, it just wasn't clear when I was reading it.
I will add that when you, so I actually, when I read this, I felt there was a lot that wasn't clear, and I needed to understand why we were doing this the way we were doing this. I went to the state code, which is what, where, why we're having to do this. And I would say, the state code is not clear. And it's not, it's not terribly well drafted. And a lot of this is governed, is really reflecting exactly what we're being forced to do under the state code. And some of it's in here, word for word. And staff has done the best they can to make it a little clearer, but it's, we make it clearer. Sometimes it becomes subject to interpretation. So we can't even do that sometimes. We can't, can't make it clearer because we have to comply with what's in the state code. So I really did struggle with that. Should we raise what you just said about the 800, 850?
Because that might be good just to discuss since you're talking about now. So at one of the prior meetings, I think maybe two meetings ago when we talked about it, it had come up that we have the 800, a lot of the laws relate to this 800-square-foot limit. Like, we have to allow an 800-square-foot ADU. But then their state's also allowing a maximum floor area of 850 square feet for an ADU. So there had been discussions in the past, let's just make everything 850. It's not that big of a change, and at least it makes one, one thing a little more consistent. So it's giving more of a bonus. People can do a slightly larger ADU, but it might be just easier to communicate the rules to people. So that's just one thing to consider. You don't have to do that. It could, we still have to allow an 850-square-foot one-bedroom ADU. But, and you could restrict other ones, the bonuses essentially, to 800 square feet if you, if you want to have that distinction. But that, it does, it is an odd distinction. I don't know why it's 850 in the state law.
Personally, I found it quite confusing when I was reading it. In some places, it's an 800 restriction, in some places it's 850. So staff had the suggestion of just making it all consistent at 850, which does make it easier when you read.
Which is allowed, right?
Yeah, you could always be more generous.
Oh.
And that's what's in the state requirement is 850 in some places.
Here, we're, they're talking about the maximum floor area of an ADU. You're allowed to be 850. But then the ones that were required to approve is 800.
Is 800, right. So we don't have to do this.
So the extra 50 feet would be then deducted from your floor area as it's, as it's.
As it's written right now, but you could change that section to be 852 to be consistent.
Were there any other areas you wanted to raise? Were there any other areas you wanted to raise? As. Well, anyone had any questions? Maybe I should do that, yeah.
I have one other question, but it's probably mostly for you of, you know, since you were kind of running point on the red line.
Okay.
When I went through the definition section, it seemed like there was quite a bit that was struck. And since I can't. Trace the red line, I was curious about. If there's any kind of meaningful. Voiceover you might offer as to like. You know, there were. Certain kind of large chunks that were cut from. Definition sections, and I just didn't know if that was to conform to state or if that was.
What are you looking at? Cause I think what I found in. The package at the center, there was one draft that was the original comments from the city attorney. And then there was a second one that I had comments on. That it was almost to the same document, so.
So I guess part of the issue too is I can't tell from who the author is.
Yeah. Mine.
I, I mean, I mark the.
I can add that there's three definitions right at the top where the, the ordinance.
Not that many changes.
It, it used to refer to. Attached accessory dwelling units, detached excessively dwelling units, and interior accessory dwelling units. And we just didn't think that distinction needed, that just made it more confusing. So um. There are distinctions between those three, but. We didn't think it, we, we thought it could be more concise without. Making all the rules for those three different types of ADUs. But it just became more confusing.
So what do you, which, what do you?
There's, there used to be under definitions. A definition of attached accessory dwelling unit, detached accessory dwelling unit, and interior accessory dwelling unit, because the code used to be. Um, distinguished between the three. And. Now, we've taken out some of that language just to, again, try to simplify the rules.
That probably addresses my question then. Is that, those are the section.
If, if you're looking for specifically, uh, the chair's red line, that starts on page thirty four.
Yeah.
So that's the ones that are a little bit in your.
I didn't have any comments on that. Let me check the state code on that though.
I've got a question, I think for staff. Uh, it's on E three about the front setbacks. Is that, I just wanted to clarify, is that a state? Requirement that we don't observe front set, front yard setbacks from. For ADUs?
Yes, if it precludes the, the minimum state exempt.
You know, going back to what Max's point is, so, so you're saying that they've. But there still is a distinction between detached and. Attached ex- um. Accessory units.
There is, but um. The code. Just used to have more references to the different types of units. I'm trying to see where in the crossed out part.
That wasn't.
It used to be.
You know what? That didn't come up in what I reviewed. So I'm wondering what you're looking at that I didn't see. If that's what just sent to me. You know what? I've got a finger on this struck out. Yeah, I don't see what, what the harm is of keeping the two distinctions.
I don't, I guess we're not getting rid of the distinction. It just maybe part of. Some of it was. Written more. Or, yeah, it was just, it seemed more confusing to me and.
Does it operationalize different with the distinction in the code or not? Meaning like? How? You know, you guys or, or city council or us would treat it?
So there's. The, the main distinction between the attached and detached is that. We do not need to. Approve. A, an attached accessory dwelling unit. That is over the floor area ratio and lot coverage. The city has a rule that. Gives a bonus for that currently, but it's not, that's not actually required by state law. So that's, I think that's the primary distinction between attached and detached. Let's see, think of something else. Yeah.
But why is it not helpful just to have just a clear definition of what attached means and what detached means? That's why, that's how she.
I, I think because. Attached and detached seem pretty straightforward to me, and those definitions looked confusing to me.
Accessory dwelling unit that shares a common wall with the primary dwelling, but by being constructed as a physical expansion. I mean, it's sort of stating the obvious.
Right.
Well, I guess.
And then, and then though, I think there might have been a concern that the interior accessory dwelling unit may, might conflict with state law.
Seems like the interior dwelling unit contains or is a. Inclusive of ADUs that are entirely contained. Within the legal space of an existing accessory structure. Even if that's detached from the main house. So I guess if we're, depending on what we're trying to include in that definition. Right? An accessory structure, like I think some of the ones that we've seen. Here that are being converted to an ADU. Would be interior. But I'm not sure if that subjects them to like different rules. I don't. Think it does.
And I think part of it was incorp- we took out the definitions, but incorporated some of that language under a number of units. When we defined which kind of units we have to allow, and some of those, some of that information was put in there. From state law.
There's no, there's no definition of attached or detached on the state law, is there? Or is there?
Well, I think they do talk about interior. Um, when they talk about areas that can be converted. But I don't think they talk about attached or detached.
Yeah, I don't see a. So this is just a, our own city requirement.
I believe so.
So, I, I mean, I could go all the way on this. If you think we should need this, we can put it, we, we insert it, but. I think what Lisa's saying, it's pretty self-explanatory, right?
Right.
You two have an opinion?
Yeah.
I guess the other one I'm, I questioned or I'm wondering about is the, the, the allowable two feet of extra height. Uh, why not just make it eighteen feet? And whether they slope the roof or, or not, it just seems. Or, or in the half mile to.
Transit.
Major transit line, which is. Somebody in the audience pointed out, we don't really have. Since the bus runs once every half hour or something.
The ferry and the train are considered major transit. And then the buses along the freeway are considered a high quality transit corridor.
I see.
So I mean, you could, you could extend that rule to everywhere in town. I think six, if someone builds a sixteen foot tall wall, it's pretty tall. If someone wanted to do a shed structure, so. They would probably be upset if you let them go to the two feet, their neighbor at least. But you could be more generous again and extend that. Additional height to everywhere in the city.
So. Um, in theory, you could have a two-story ADU.
Yes, right, yeah.
Yeah, if you could get the plate heights to work out.
Well, you have a flat roof and. And a slab floor, and you're, you're there. Um. But then how's the eight hundred square feet workout? It's still. On each floor?
That's a good question. I think it would probably be hard to. You could do a two-story structure, but it might be four hundred square feet on each floor.
That's.
Unless there's, unless, unless it's. In such, such a way that it falls under some other definition like attic or something that's exempt.
Which would be under seven feet.
Which you might be able to do for a loft.
Yeah. It, it just, uh, it, it will be a used loophole. I think.
But that's a state prescribed requirement, so there's not.
Yeah.
Much argument on that one, I think, right?
Well, the state, there's a distinction, right, in the state between this, it's sixteen, although it's sixteen feet. Unless it's within half a mile of a public transit stop, and then it's eighteen feet, right? No?
Y- yes, um, and. Also, with, with the roof pitch, it can.
Yeah.
If you're mirroring the roof pitch, you can go from sixteen to eighteen.
Again, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's another example, I believe, where we just were mirroring what it's state. The state requires. So we can. Be more. Flexible, like we could be more um, lenient.
Make it taller.
Yeah, we can go taller, make it sort of be more lenient on it, but we can't be more restrictive. And that's up to us if we wanna consider that.
No, I, I wouldn't wanna do that. I mean, if, if you think about eight hundred square feet. Um, and you have an eighteen foot high. Um, if, if they do a flat ceiling, that's, that's a big, that's a big box.
Right, so we should just leave it as.
I think leaving it is what we should do.
But. I did, actually, I did have one more question that you reminded me on the public transit, because I, the. Definition that's in here just talks about any public transit stop. Which we have lots.
Again, there's two. Two sections. So one section that talks about parking. Only relates to any transit stop, and that's because that's um. What's required in a state law. And then the height section. Is on, is the extra height is limited to areas that have a high quality transit. Corridor, major transit stop. So you could, again, make those consistent. But it would. End up being more generous. You can't be. More restrictive. So for part, if you're, most units in the city just don't need parking because everyone's within a half mile of a bus stop.
Right, but where's the eighteen foot definition?
Uh, under the section G for height limits.
Right here.
So G two.
Oh, high quality, that's what it was, yeah. Okay, I remember now, yeah. So I, I actually forgot we talked about this, yeah.
Okay, let's leave it.
Any more questions?
The, the city attorney had recommended deletion of. The definition of primary structure, I believe, so that's.
That was his new, yeah.
Um, it's called proposed primary residence, just, he recommended just deleting that definition.
And why, why?
It's on the first.
But what, did he say why? But he wants to delete the whole definition?
Well, I think there was a concern about.
Oh, yeah.
That meets the requirements for permitting, but we had deleted that, so. I think, cause there is, is there a proposed primary residence in the ordinance? It may not be.
There is, actually. Yeah, we do use it, primary dwelling unit. I know I've seen it.
His comment was that the term is used in the ordinance, but he's not sure that it needs to be defined. He thinks that the way it is defined would be questioned by the state.
Oh, I see. So he doesn't wanna defin- oh, he doesn't like our definition. Okay. And where, where's the definition gone? Oh, here it is. Single family. So I'm looking at it in the page thirty five. So what, what was the issue with it? It's just a single family or multifamily dwelling that is subject of a permit application?
Maybe it's the subject of a permit application that they don't like, cause what does that mean?
Well, submit, I mean. Okay.
It's, if, if we delete it, I don't think there's. That's the way we would be interpreting it and applying it, so I don't see it as a big loss if we do take it out.
You know, I guess without the definition, it becomes a little more vague, which you could. Be subject to interpretation, so.
I, yeah, I'm inclined to leave it in.
Well, well, it can go both ways.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, if we leave it out, then it can't be questioned. We leave it in, then they could tell us that we can't have that definition or apply it that way.
Yeah. Again, I, I'm, I'm fine either way. What, what did the? And this commission has a strong opinion. And that's not in state code, right?
Primary residence, application for a primary, I think it just doesn't say what.
It's not defined. It, the, the term is used, but.
It's just not defined in the state law.
I feel like I got it from there, but. And what's the definition?
Must be, it's something that we put in your, during your mortgage application, you have to. Specify primary versus.
That's true.
It must be defined somewhere, because like when you're filling out like the mortgage application or things like that, you get different rates for specifying as a primary dwelling, or. Sorry, primary, um. You know.
Or secondary.
Yeah, or investment property or things like that.
But if you look at the way it's being defined right now, it just says it's a single family home or multifamily home. That's subject. That's a subject of a permit application submitted to the city. I mean, it doesn't really add anything. It just says. It doesn't talk about that. What you're referring to. Which, again, you're right. I mean, it's sort of self-evident. It's just, it's the house that we're talking about. The question then is. If there's two homes on a particular property, but then it becomes a multi. Family dwelling.
No, I think multifamily is. Attached, right? Or like condominiums.
Are they attached?
No, there's something else, there's something else in the state law that, that says, I believe, that if you have. Two, you can have two primary detached dwellings. I think there's another provision somewhere in there, because it, it says. I believe it says that we can't. We, if there's two primary dwellings, we can't say one of them's a second unit. Cause that's something that jurisdictions were doing too. So they. Made, I don't know if that's interpretation in the handbook or in the state law, but I know there's. A distinction that we, we have to allow the ADUs for each primary dwelling, and we can't just. Say something's a second unit.
I think it's redundant in, in the phrasing. It's almost like you just wanna say proposed primary residence means a single family or multifamily dwelling that is the subject of a permit. Application that has been submitted, submitted to the, to the city of Larkspur. And you don't need to see and includes proposed single family dwelling unit. Cause that, you're saying the same thing again. Which is confusing to me, but.
I, I guess we're not sure what the city attorney is objecting to, so. I mean. If, if he, if he had provided a bit more clarity, we. We could agree or disagree with it. I sort of agree that I don't think, if, if the definition is removed, it's sort of self-evident that it's. The way that's defined right now, I don't think we're gonna get necessarily tripped up. Um. Because. Otherwise, it would be somebody coming in, asking to put an ADU. Oh, I see what they're saying. He's saying, so somebody could, so there is no. It, it's, are they, is he concerned that? You have, that the, somebody could just come in and say, I would just wanna build an ADU, but then you need now need a separate permit that goes with the primary residence? That's a separate permit? Like, is that the concern?
That, I, I also understood that there was a certain extent of gaming put into it. And, and so far as like. You know, when you, when you sign up for a mortgage on a primary residence, you get a different rate than if it's a investment property and things like that. And there's a timing component of how long you need to live in a certain place to take advantage of the tax benefits. So similarly, if you're going to set up an ADU, there might potentially be. You might wanna map to the primary residence benefits, so that if someone. You know, theoretically claims it as a primary residence, lives there for six months, and then rents the, what was the primary, and then sets up an ADU. You've got two rental properties on the same lot.
So I s- I understand what you're saying, but then we should say that in the definition. And it just doesn't say that, doesn't say any of that. Doesn't say you have to live there, or it has to be a primary home.
I guess that, that was part of my question around, I assume it's somewhere in. State law or mortgage law, I don't know where the governing body is, but I know that there's a timing component to where, what you can claim as a primary residence.
Is, is that true, Elise?
I don't know that law.
And I, I don't know either.
I honestly think if you just took out the last part of it, it works fine. And then.
Then we should just leave. Then we should just leave it in, yeah. Means a single family or multifamily dwellings that is the subject of a permit application.
That has been submitted to the city of Larkspur, period. Because you already said that.
Okay. All right, so we'll we'll remove that language, everything that comes after and includes.
Okay.
And then is Alex, you said there were a couple of issues that he raised.
The the city attorney?
Yeah.
The only other one would be um just adding the word garage into the definition of floor area.
Right.
Good idea. It is. Yeah, i- in the in the main definitions, it's defined as such, so I think he just wants it to be consistent. It's not consistent with other cities, but it is what we've done.
All right, and do we need to discuss um the alternate language?
Yes.
Okay. So do we have any comments on what we would prefer? This is to do with the.
Yeah, I think the the, I would recommend looking at the actual ordinance language, because I think the red line is slightly different. So if, let's see, under um. After the red line versions, there's the ordinance. See here, let's see what page it is on here.
Where are we referring to?
Where it's eighteen twenty point five oh percentage of lot coverage.
So if if you look at attachment four, under section three and section four.
Attachment four.
That, so that's the actual um proposed ordinance.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm looking in the wrong section.
And. So under section three, there's, there's an option one that says it's maintaining status quo, so. And this again, you could change to eight fifty if you want to. But you could put in the maximum lot coverage shall be increased equivalent to the area in square feet. Up to eight hundred or eight fifty square feet of one accessory dwelling unit or junior accessory dwelling unit constructed after July first. That complies with requirements for ministerial approval under the ADU chapter. And then. We've said you can consider, cause this issue has come up, whether or not you wanna require an internal connection. That we can't deny a unit. That meets the state requirements, that doesn't have an internal connect, or sorry, that has an internal connection. But um you don't necessarily have to give a bonus floor areas to a house. If the if the ADU is internally connected, so I hope that makes sense. So if someone was adding an attached ADU. And had it internally connected to the house, you don't have to then say you can have another eight hundred square feet to add on to your house. Or you could, so it's just, it's just something, it's come up with some of the ADU applications. I know a lot of. There are people who legitimately want an internal connection because they're caring for a household member or have it for an all pair, so. I don't wanna recommend that you put that in, but it it definitely has come up with. Cause when people are asking for additional floor area for their house. Um, there's been questions about why is the ADU internally connected?
But it also has to have an exterior entrance.
They do all have to have an.
I just wanna make that clear. I didn't really appreciate that, but.
Now, the second option that we've provided is the state doesn't require the city to give. To um approve an attached ADU that's um, an attached ADU. That's over floor area, so they do require us to approve an eight hundred square foot detached ADU. And they require us to approve an ADU that's created with an existing space. But they don't require us to give any sort of bonus for an attached ADU. I don't know why, and maybe the law will change next year. But right now, that's the way it's written. The current city requirement would give the bonus to the attached ADU also right now.
So which would be five hundred square feet, is that right for it for?
Currently, we give eight hundred square feet for an attached or detached ADU that meets four foot setbacks and is sixteen feet tall. And it's an, it's an encouragement to ADU development, so there's, I mean, that's the bonus of it, but. If you're concerned people are taking advantage of it, you could limit that by saying that doesn't apply to attached ADUs.
They are definitely taking advantage of it. I mean, you know.
Yeah, and then, yeah, I think the attached ones are the ones that take advantage of it the most.
Entering through a French door that that goes out onto the same deck as the other entry. You you get a little suspicious about what it's being used for.
And that might be why the state doesn't require the attached ones to go over floor area. I don't know what the their logic was.
Okay, um. So thoughts on the on the on that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think the internal connection issue, I think we kinda talked about it last week or last meeting. But um. You know, how do we, how do we try and figure out what the end use of the? Um, of the ADU is, right? Cause I mean, that, I think we, I don't wanna speak for you guys, but I am. In favor of people developing more ADUs, but for housing, not for getting a bonus on your floor area. Um, trying to like, uh, seems like hit around, use a loophole, basically, so. Yeah, I don't know. I think it's kind of a balancing act. I'm not sure where. Yeah, how much we can define, I guess.
I've sort of, uh, you know, kinda gone belly up on that and just. I, it's too hard to, uh, you you're not gonna be able to enforce it anyway.
Right.
So. Just hope they're honest people and they're actually gonna have an A, a real ADU as opposed to a big family room with a kitchen.
Yeah, and I I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, nothing, nothing too incremental. I agree with Brock and Liam.
Actually, I kind of came full circle. I think initially I was very against it and now. I do see a lot of people doing exactly what you said, adding units to have elderly people in there or pairs in there or. The the which they do need the interior access. Um. Which is hard to do in Marin, cause it's such limited space, so I'm maybe a little bit more open to. Not excluding the internal access.
What do you mean it's hard to do in Marin?
Well, just Marin is.
Hard.
There's not a lot of space, that's all. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's always just a general lack of space here.
To build a detached.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Or even having something attached, it doesn't have an interior, cause you could have something attached, right? But it doesn't have an interior access. Right, it could could share a wall, which is maybe why we need the definition of. Detached and.
Oh, I think sharing a wall is. I mean, it's the same thing. It's like, it's just one step away from being attached, I guess, right? So.
Well, she has a question, if if it's, if it's sharing a a wall, but it does, has no access. That's, is that the detached or is that becomes attached?
You know, I I don't know if it's the handbook has. I I felt like there was, there's some comment about um attachments.
I think anecdotally, it's detached, because in our house, there's a basement with a separate entrance that we can access. And it was considered detached.
Interesting, okay.
And I would consider it attached if it was part of the main building. Even if it was a basement and you couldn't get to it, it like physically would have to be, not not connected by a breezeway, um, it'd have to be. Detached, to be detached.
Yeah. See, now maybe this is why we might need that definition of detached and attached.
Well, I mean, not if we don't make a distinction here, right? I guess that.
Well, there were other rules, there were other rules that went around.
True.
Um. It's an atta- attached ADU and detached.
Well, it says here, if it does not have an internal connection to another dwelling unit, is that, I mean, internal connection instead of detached or attached? That's the proposed language, right?
Right, I think, I think what.
So it'd be.
What the objection is, is that you you have a a separate unit, whether or not it, whether or not it shares a wall, right? That's the main house and you have something here. As soon as you open that up, that becomes an internal access, right? And then the question is, is it really a separate dwelling unit or they just using it as a games room or something that?
No, yeah.
You know, so that becomes the question, but it needs to have the kitchen, it needs to be self-contained. Um, but you could put someone in there with a kitchen, with a bathroom. And they could walk into the main house and that's probably okay if you have a a renter that's connected with the family. Like a child, you know, care, like a.
Right, or the, we had somebody in here a few weeks ago that was moving their dad into.
Exactly.
House and that, yeah, that seems like a.
Yeah.
Good thing.
Again, I think there are battles, we just.
Can't win.
You can't win.
Yeah.
And um.
But is is that even a battle? Like, maybe it's okay that there's an interior access.
I think you're gonna have people that cheat the system.
Right.
And you're gonna have people that are doing what you're talking about, which is an elderly person that they wanna take care of. But the other person wants to be independent too. So, and that's a kind of a nice thing.
Right. So so I've sort of, I've grappled with that, but I I think on balance, I'm okay with the interior. But um access being okay. Um. But I still am curious to know, or did we find the definition?
There's the definition of attached in our regular code. That says sharing common walls or floor ceiling assemblies or having a budding walls are connected by an enclosed corridor. Of not more than five feet in length. And then the following devices or one similar in function shall not be considered as providing attachment. Breezeways, lanais, covered porches, arbors, fences, screens, decks, walkways or structures meeting only at their corners. So if you, if it wasn't defined in the ADU ordinance, we would probably use that definition to consider if something was attached, which is a lot more clear.
Okay, cause your def- your definition that you're struck here is saying.
Just says common wall.
It just says a common wall.
Right.
So right now, if that's, that's considered attached. Deep, so attached, even though, let's say there's no access in here and the only door is here, that's still, that is detached.
That's attached.
Attached, yeah.
Yes.
And it would have to be over here to be detached.
Right, yeah.
Um.
Thus J A D U and A D U.
Right. Well, no, cause you can have an attached ADU and that's that there. That's an attached ADU. J D U is interior, it will be inside here, right?
But.
J D U, J A D U, that's where you have the interior access, right? Yeah.
Is it?
That's.
Or it's created within existing space.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I thought it had to have an exterior access.
It needs an exterior access, but it could have an interior access.
You can just carve off part of your house and make a J A D U, but it has to have an outside door.
Right, so it's gotta be on the edge of your house.
So, I mean, it it's, it's such a fine line. Really.
I know.
I I just don't think it's bell worth.
Right, no, I I agree, I agree. Um, and then another comment on the two different languages, which I've just lost again, is when you say um. This complies with requirements for ministerial approval under chapter eighteen twenty-three. That's this chapter eighteen twenty-three that you've dropped this into.
Um, we're referring back to the accessory dwelling unit chapter. Um, so that the section on lot coverage and floor area are in different chapters of the title. And so we're we're referring back to the ADU chapter, so if some, if something meets all the requirements of the ADU chapter, then then they could get the.
But if it's our own city code.
Right, right.
Okay.
We can say Larkspur municipal code or.
Though I, probably not necessarily, I just wanna clarify that, um, okay. That to me is clearer, the second one than the first one.
Where are you?
Oh, in the two alternative language.
Which, which ones? So I think.
Yeah.
I think one in the ordinance is reversed, um. Option one is.
Oh, okay.
And then also just to clarify, the the maximum gross floor area should be increased equivalent to the area in square feet. It's also hard, up to eight fifty square feet of one ADU or. And it could be both, right? Doesn't actually, it's actually not one or the other. In theory, could be both.
You, in theory, you could be both.
Both.
Like of any ADU.
So as long as that doesn't, okay. Or J D U constructed after July twenty-three that complies with these requirements. Um. In the event. The ADU or J D U is modified so that it no longer complies with the requirements under eighteen twenty-three oh seven oh. Which is what again? That's the.
That's the state exempt ADU section.
Okay, or this section, E G, removal of the kitchen, the property owner shall. I feel like it's missing something there. It should say then it's no longer treated. That, once it doesn't comply, it's no longer a an aid of, an ADU, an approved ADU. And then they have to get necessary permits. To legalize this, the additional square footage as as approved lot area, right? They have to come in for for F A R exception.
And they may not need, they may not need one if if they have plenty of floor area.
But if they don't, then they have to come back in to get the approval.
Right.
And the reality is, people won't do that. Cause they they, when they sell the house, they'll put the kitchen back in. Um, and and then it's legal again. But if they're using it for a big family room, they're gonna use it for a big family room.
Oh, we can't control that, I guess, but.
Right.
But they do have to do that when they come to sell the house. I mean, someone's gonna go in there and check on it.
In in theory.
Right, yeah.
Right, in theory, if if they had removed the kitchen. We could say they're in violation of the Florida regulations.
And then what?
And then require someone to come in for floor exception. I mean, that's what they're gonna be asking for.
But I guess in theory, if they come to sell the house, they would have to be in compliance. Well, they would have to just put that in their disclosures.
You would think, yeah.
Yeah.
We we haven't been improving them so long that we've had that experience. We see the opposite more that people put in ADUs than take them out so far.
Yeah, Mill Valley's been doing this longer and and I was involved with a couple where, you know. Um, he would, it was gonna be an office. It wasn't gonna be a um a J A D U.
Is that city or county?
This was city.
Okay.
Um, but in theory, when he sells the house. Um, he would have to put the kitchen back in and 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 if he doesn't, what happens? I've, and and that's again, another thing you do, you just can't worry about everything, cause there's. There's just too much. Um, you have to believe people are are to some degree honest.
Honest, yeah. So, okay, just to keep the meeting moving, what, do we have a, any, any more opinions on this language?
Uh, I've got a quick question, I think. I think it's quick. So the the difference between these two. Um. Options that are shown here are. Um. The first one is one accessory dwelling unit or junior accessory accessory dwelling unit, and the second one is. Um, up to eight hundred square feet, is that right?
Uh, the the primary difference is just that one applies to. Interior attached and detached, and one only applies to interior and detached, which is the state requirement.
No, but you also have the exempt eight fifty exemption in the second one.
They're both this, they're both the same that way. So it's whether or not you wanna. Apply that exception to attached units or not.
I I was just reading the up to eight hundred square feet in the second one, and I didn't see that in the first one. So that seemed like a limit.
Okay.
Eight hundred versus eight fifty. Or was I?
Okay, that's true. Um, that's, I, I think that's because. Is there a reason for that?
Is anything over eight fifty?
Because anything, what, it's already included in the, I guess if it was a new structure, it wouldn't be, um. Additional lot coverage. Oh, because it only applies to the state exempt units and the state exempt units can only be eight hundred square feet, so I think it was. Like, it was unnecessary to state the size because. It, you could only have up to eight hundred square feet.
But it's clearer to state it, I think, right?
Yeah.
I would rather state that.
Yeah, I would, I think it's, it would be more clear, especially if you're gonna do eight fifty.
I was gonna say, are we gonna change, we're gonna change that to eight fifty?
Yeah, oh yeah, if you wanna change to eight fifty, I would definitely call that out.
I think you have to call it everywhere if you're gonna do it.
Right. And then that does, so I guess what we're considering is the first language or the second language, and are we? Well, the second language has had that optional.
So I guess one, one question is, is there, do you wanna allow an intern or require and, or sorry. Prohibit an internal connection, and it sounds like the majority. I, or I don't know, but it sounds like the majority of you are okay with an internal connection. And then the second question is, do you want the exemption or the additional floor area to apply to? Attached A D Us as well as detached. And internally do use, or, or do you want just to apply to, um. Or do you wanna exclude attached A D Us from getting the floor area bonus?
Say that again.
Which would be, would be five hundred to eight fifty, is that what you mean? When you say.
So the, would you like the. It, like, the house gets an additional eight hundred fifty square feet for an internal A D U. And then detached A D U, or does the house get an extra eight hundred fifty square feet for an internal A D U, an attached A D U? Or a detached A D U? Does that make sense? So it's, it's.
So there is no, there's no J A D U at that point.
Or, I mean, J D is in there as well, so you could give, the bonus could be for the. J A D U if you're doing that, but J D Us are always internal, so it's not as much of a distinction.
But where do you say that in that language? Where, I don't even see where you've said that.
So, we're referring back to the state exempt A D Us and that the state exempt A D Us. Only applies to attached and, sorry, internal and detached A D Us.
So we're doing a Mill Valley thing where we're just referring back to that.
Back to another section.
Yeah.
It, it seems to me it's simpler to do that. You know, uh, whether you do it internally, um, or it's quote attached. It's the, it's pretty much the same thing. You punch a hole in the wall and now it's internal, so.
Or people will game it by having an addition and then converting it to an A D U, so it, there's always gonna be a way to. Game it, so if you keep it the way it currently is, which is for all three, internal, attached, or detached. I think that would, it would be straightforward and just continue their existing policy, and it does provide an incentive for A D U development.
Yeah.
And I suppose that even if somebody's using it as a big family room now, at some point in the future, I guess you've got all the plumbing and everything, right? If they sell it, somebody could turn it back into an A D U without too much trouble.
They would in theory have to turn it.
They would have to, to sell it.
For to sell it, you would hope.
Or, yeah, and. They might just be using it that way, but it might be all set up to be an A D U for the next person.
They'd have to cover their door with new drywall.
A sheet.
I guess, I'm sorry, I know I keep asking the same question here, but. Both sets of, see, what I, what I'm confused about is you're saying. That this has to comply with the conditions in chapter eighteen twenty-three, which is the A D U section in our. City code, right?
Correct.
But then, and the, the other language you've said, we've got to comply with section eighteen twenty-three seventy. Which is still within. Our chapter eighteen twenty-three. So it's, so we're referring to the same language. So why would there be any difference between what will?
Or section eighteen twenty-three oh seven zero is just more restrictive. There's, it's, you, there's. It's the eight hundred square foot, sixteen foot unit that meets four foot setbacks where. The other section could apply to a twelve hundred square foot unit or one that.
Wow, cuz that's hard to follow, I think. Like if I was trying to read this code and trying to refer, figure out what I was referring to.
So that's where again, the, if you wanna keep the status quo, I think that section is a little more. It's easier to understand just as it has to comply with chapter eighteen point two-three.
Okay. Right, do we have any, can we come to a conclusion on that?
We should let the audience, uh, if there is an audience. All the raised hands.
Yeah. There is. One, another phone call?
Uh, James Holmes, Larkspur. Uh, in general, since the state is forcing so much on us. I don't think we should be more generous than what the state is forcing us to be. Uh, let's not be more generous just for the sake of consistency. With regard to, uh, having a, an internal connection, it seems to me that we need to repair back to what the. Overriding state policy is. The overriding state policy is to have more units, not just bigger houses. And just as a practical matter, state policy assumes, and I think it's a state, I think it's practical. That if there is no internal connection, i- it is more likely to be, uh, a separate, uh, unit. And therefore, the state policy is more likely to be observed. So I think that we should go with the likelihood that the state policy a- assumes. Um, but, um, uh, my primary concern. Uh, does this, is this the legislative package which includes, uh, abolishing the restricted areas?
Yes.
Okay, that, that is my primary concern here. Uh, that's a major step. And so I guess I'd like to ask a question and then make a comment based on the response to the question. And, and that, my question is, uh, did the state gi- give us any written directions? And if they did, whether or not they did, did they give us any citations to legal authority? For the demand that we have to have extensive studies to support. Uh, what we, uh, to support our restricted areas. So that's my question, and then I'd like to follow it up with a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
I, yeah, I, as I say, I wanna follow up with a comment.
Uh, there was no, uh, written, yeah, I, I think our meeting with the state was verbal back and forth, there was no.
Okay.
Formal written.
I, I'm not surprised, uh, because, uh, I do not believe that there is any. Legal authority for what the state is saying. Uh, I think they are just jawboning us orally. And I don't think we should be intimidated just on the basis, for something this extensive. Just on the basis of, of oral, uh, jawboning, because the statute, which I read. Specifically says, and it was an, it was an additional, it was a separate edition in, a specific edition in nineteen ninety, uh, uh. Two thousand and nineteen, I think. It specifically says that designation of areas. Uh, may be based on the impact of accessory dwelling units on traffic flow and public. Safety. And now that's a specific authorization. Now, uh, there are no regulations that I could find that, uh. Require, that state what kind of, uh, uh, what kind of, 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 of backup. One has to have, uh, to regarding that impact. But that is a, that is a statutory, uh, right that we have. Uh, now, I, unfortunately, the law includes an exemption. Normally, before a bureaucrat can require something different or extra from the law, they have to put it in regulations. That's the Administrative Procedure Act. Unfortunately, this statute in subsection nine has a little. Uh, exception that says that guidelines to implement uniform standards or criteria. Can be done without following the Administrative Procedure Act. So, uh, that, that's a bit of a, so the absence of regulations in and of itself is not an objection. However, the only guideline that the state has that I could see. Is the so-called handbook. And, uh, the, the handbook has two references to, uh, the issue of, uh, restricted areas. The first reference just quotes, uh, the statute. The second reference is in the F A Qs. And the F A Q, the, the, the question is, are A D Us required throughout the jurisdiction? And the answer is no. And then it, it again quotes the, the statutory authorization. To, uh, designate areas, uh, based on traffic flow and public safety. And then it goes on to say, uh, uh, any limitations. Should be accompanied by detailed findings of fact explaining. Why the A D U limitation is required and consistent with these factors. These factors being the statutory factors of traffic flow and public safety. So, there is no basis that I could find reviewing the law. For extensive and detailed studies. That is purely bureaucratic jawboning. That we should not be intimidated, uh, by, uh, however. And it is, it is my understanding that we do have, uh, uh, we, we, we do have, uh. Findings and a basis for it, and if we do not, then clearly. Uh, our legis, our, our statute should be, uh, beefed up to include those findings. Some of which might even include pictures, since a picture is worth a thousand words. Pictures of some of the very narrow streets like Walnut, which are just one step up from, from the deer trail. But I'm sure that our, uh, fire staff that originally designated the areas. Could provide some very, uh, useful expert findings that could be incorporated. Uh, into the legislation. But I do not think that we should, uh, relinquish. All of our, uh, uh, restricted areas when there is not a scintilla. Of statutory or regulatory basis for what the state is demanding. We have to keep in mind that we need to be skeptical about what the state says. Because the state is not a neutral arbiter and applier of law in this particular area. The state people are advocates for more housing, and that is what they are pushing for. Based on what I would say is Y M B type housing activism. So in this case, at least my research did not. Find any basis for that. And so while we may need to beef up our findings. We should not just back off completely based on, uh, based on, uh, um. Jawboning, bureaucratic jawboning without any legal basis.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holmes. Um, I, I do wanna respond on your first comment about the, I know we, we were talking about this on the commission, um. The interior access. I did used to agree wholeheartedly with you that you would ha- a separate unit. Generally meant a separate. Living, you know, there would be a, it would be, it would, if, if somebody, if there was no interior access and it would, they, you had to restrict an interior access. It generally meant that it would be a genuine separate unit. But I guess more recently, I've met so many. Families and people in our neighborhood who have brought someone into their home, be it a childcare provider. Or an elderly parent that they would not have been able to do if they couldn't add more square footage or add an A D U. And that would have a separate entrance, but also an interior entrance, so. That person would have to live somewhere else, maybe outside of the city to be able to afford it. So I, so I'm, I'm sort of coming around to thinking that interior access maybe isn't as sort of the evil thing as we originally thought it was. But, I just one opinion. Your second comment though about restricted areas, I think we do, it was on my list of things to talk about.
Because we do have, um, so we, we have the opinion, we have opinions, they published all the opinions for the written comments for ordinances they have reviewed. They hadn't reviewed our ordinance formally with a written comment since it was first adopted and we adopted that restriction. And they're planning to do that as part of our housing element review, and then they gave staff the courtesy of telling us what they were. Are gonna say in that letter, I guess. Um, but I can tell you what they're telling other jurisdictions, and this is starting with Berkeley, who had. A study that was prepared by UC Berkeley about their fire hazards. So number one is that. There are restrictions violate government code six five eight five two point two subdivision A and E. Because even if the city provides adequate justification for the restriction, the city can't. Restrict A D Us that fall under subdivision E as local development standards, such as an area restriction based on a fire hazard. Can't, it, that can't be used, um, to preclude or the units under government code section six five eight five two point two subdivisions A through D. Or sorry, let me just read it so it's clear. We can't reply that restriction to A D Us created under government code section six five eight five two point two subdivision E. Those are the state exempt A D Us. And so that, that's the code section, the number one code section that they're citing is that. It doesn't matter if we have great reasoning for our fire hazard ordinance. Government code six five eight five two point two subdivision E does not let us apply that standard. We could only apply the standards of four foot side and rear setback, detached, internal sixteen foot height limit. Like that's, that's all we could apply, so everyone in the Madrone Canyon area can do that kind of A D U today. And they'll definitely say we can't apply our fire restriction to those types of A D Us.
But I thought there was a, there was still a health and safety.
There's a health and safety section, but they say we can't apply that to the, the state exempt A D Us. Because the state exempt A D Us are exempt from all of our standards.
But I thought even within the state code, if they still had to comply with fire and safety.
Only the ones A through D, so government said six five eight five two point two subdivisions A through D. Um, so, so the only ones that we can apply that to are attached, essentially attached units or those that don't, that are over eight hundred square feet or. So, and, and in reality, if we were up to apply it that way, people would just come in with the ones that are state exempt A D Us. So to staff, we could still try to fight our rule, but they've just made it. They've put, they've put in a loophole that everyone will use instead. And then, and then what they say for the, for the other, um, for the study part, again, this is the letter for UC. The letter for Berkeley, who had used a study published by UC Berkeley. That. They were sympathetic to their concerns about fire safety and the need to ensure adequate evacuation in the event of fire. But the city has not adequately demonstrated that new A D Us will actually impact public safety. The traffic simulation study is not specific to A D Us and J D Us. And therefore, the information and conclusions do not adequately justify the restriction on A D Us. Spis, and then under that. Per government code six five eight five two point two subdivision A one A, which is the section that allows it. Specifically, the city relies on the study which looks at total vehicu- vehicular use to conclude that A D Us will create an evacuation hazard. This study, however, does not provide data on how many lots are likely to add A D Us or what specific. or what specific impact new ADUs might have on the evacuations. Moreover, the city does not account for the potential for ADUs to be excluded from required parking, given the available of transit in their district. So same, the, all those same things would apply to us. We, our, our facts aren't specific to ADUs, they're not specific to JDUs. They don't account for how many ADUs and JDUs have parking because their, a majority of them will be exempt from parking requirements. While I believe that it's a fire hazard to create more ADUs in the area and that they will have cars, we don't have that study to say that. And, and once we do, I think it would be, would be justified in including this restriction. You're, you can definitely leave in the restriction and wait for the letter to come from the state. And that's something that you have the option to do.
But can we just leave in the restriction with the requirement that we have to provide that study? That we, if, if it's justified.
That once, once the city has its study, that.
Yeah, well, or just at once, if it's justified, so we still comply with state law. Cause it's, it is, rather than removing it completely, we can comply with state law. So we, so we just do what we can to keep a restriction in, in compliance.
Yeah, we can do, and the city's working with the fire department to come, they're studying evacuation and they may be able to study ADUs specifically and we can get more information on parking. Um, but just so you're aware, people are just gonna use that other section to put in ADUs. So it's, it's gonna just, no one's.
And when you say the other section, you mean that subsection E?
The state exempt ADU section, the one, the ones that are created in existing space or a detached ADU up to eight hundred square feet.
But isn't the subsection, he does still, doesn't that still have the side and rear setbacks sufficient for fire and safety?
For foot side and rear setbacks.
Yeah, but that's, unless I'm reading this wrong, I still see that there's an exclusion for fire and safety when it comes to the setbacks, which is in subsection E.
But they're not, they're not gonna say the setbacks are gonna be a problem. That's not gonna be a, the fire department, they'll approve a three-foot setback. They don't, they don't have problems with the setback.
And, and my understanding too is that they're, they don't, they won't require fire sprinklers.
We can't require fire sprinklers.
Or you can't.
Unless the main house needs fire sprinklers. So if they're doing them, so we, yes, those, those intern, the state exempt ADUs likely will not need fire sprinklers.
Because you, you know, when you remodel.
Detached structure though.
That's.
Yeah. And then there's other things that will make it extremely difficult to put in an ADU in that area because they still have to meet fire code requirements for access and water supply. And that's tough to meet in Madron Canyon. Like they may need a, they may need a, uh, an, an area of a wide road to provide an access for a fire truck to park to put out the fire. And that just may be impossible in some of those areas. Um, so there's other, there's other fire codes that are gonna make it really difficult for people to put in an ADU, even if the, the exclude, exclusion area is taken out.
And this, this, I was explaining this to Natasha, that's the area that I live in, I'm on Olive. And so basically from us to the Don Falls Trail.
Yeah.
Is the restricted area here. And I guess anecdotally speaking, I'm not sure how many of these are permitted versus unpermitted. But you know, from a kind of high proportion of the houses, there's sort of a, a main walk-up and then a sidewalk up to the ADU. Um, like my house has an ADU, almost every house, especially on Olive past, there's a little bridge. You know, fire trucks, I don't know how they get up there. Um, but there's quite a few kind of ADUs in our spot, uh Scott, Mallard, all of the kind of surrounding streets. Um, but also, I guess my only kind of observational point would be, I don't know how much more density there would be just given the sort of juxtaposition of lot size to ADU, you know, kind of potential. Um, you know, most of the houses that have them are the ones on these high sloping, you know, so large from an acreage perspective, but small from a usable lot perspective, that there, it's much easier to throw a ADU up on the hill. Whereas some of the other lots are just generally much smaller and don't really lend themselves to a detached ADU.
Could you have people building with a zero foot front yard setback? Because.
If, yes, if you can't.
Everything else precludes it.
For exa, or the fire, and the fire, the fire access might require them to build closer to the street because meeting the setback might, or, or they'd have, I mean, they'd have to have some reason why they can't meet the setback, like, or, but there also could be oak trees or redwood trees there, or things that make it difficult to meet the setback.
There are quite a few houses with that issue.
I mean, so you can, you can see what the state says and the fire department is working on studies. So it's, it's up to you if you wanna leave it in. We predict it will be required to be taken out.
Can we have, I, I'm just looking at the Mill Valley Code. I mean, they've, and I don't know if, you're saying that their language wasn't approved, but they had that all ADUs and JDUs must satisfy all applicable building fire and safety standards. I mean.
I mean, all of them, we don't have to put it in the code that they have to meet the building and fire code. I mean, that's, that's a given. They're gonna have to meet the fire code.
The, the local one or the, the California one?
California.
That's a given.
Right.
Okay. So what do we want to do there? So we have a few things we need to decide.
If, if you leave it in, when we get the review and they tell us to take it out, we'll just come back. It's, it's, you know, it's not the. We'll just revisit, we'll have another opportunity to reword thing.
I would also add that at the end of this, there's a section that says if there's anything in here that's in contradiction to state code, the state code overrides. So even if we have it in there, it's, it's overridden by the state code that says you can't do it.
I mean, I think what James Holmes is saying is HCD is interpreting some of these laws, which is true. But courts are looking at their interpretation with a lot of weight, so.
But then somebody has to take them to court and, exactly, and sue them to, to get them.
They have an enforcement division of a large number of staff that could just start fining us. And if we were to enforce it.
Right.
No one's coming in for units there because of the prohibition, so it's hard to know how many people really want them. Um, I don't think we get that many inquiries about that area, but.
Probably for the reason that.
If we, if we were to enforce something that we know they're saying is not okay, that's when we would get in trouble.
Okay. All right, so how do you want us to proceed on this? Do we need to talk any further? Do somebody, we make a, I, I, I wanna make sure the commission is comfortable with language, whether taking out, putting in, before we can make a motion to approve this. I mean, we need to be clear on exactly what we're approving. So it seems like what I'm hearing is we're gonna keep the restricted area language in there. Is, are we, is, are we good with that? And then we have the two alternatives on the um lot, lot coverage.
And it sounds like um the preference was to essentially maintain status quo to allow a site to go over by up to eight hundred and fifty square feet for the area of an internal detached or attached accessory dwelling unit. And that an internal connection would be okay.
And to address James Holmes' comment is about not being more lenient than state code, as we're not here. I mean, the state, state is saying eight hundred and fifty.
You're being more lenient because you don't have to allow the house to expand. So.
Okay.
We don't have to allow attached.
You don't have to allow a bonus for attached and you don't have to, you don't have to give any sort of bonus floor area to the site so that the house can now get larger.
But if somebody wants to come in and build an eight hundred and fifty square foot ADU, they can do that.
An eight hundred square foot ADU, they could do that.
But they can also do eight fifty on the state.
Right, if they're using part of their floor area.
Okay.
That's confusing to me. I thought.
Yeah.
I thought we said eight hundred and fifty square feet was what.
That's what I thought too. Sorry, that's what I thought too.
So we have to allow an, an ADU up to eight hundred and fifty square feet, but we don't have to allow a floor, we don't have to allow that unit to go over floor area and lot coverage. But we do have to allow an eight hundred square foot unit to go over floor area and lot coverage. So it's.
So we still, so we do have to allow an eight hundred and fifty. If somebody wants to build a, an ADU that's eight hundred and fifty square feet, and it's in compliance setbacks, we cannot say no.
Yes, if it, we could say no if it takes them over the floor area and lot coverage.
But I thought state, the state overrode that.
Only up to eight hundred square feet.
So if their house is maxed out and they come in for an eight hundred and fifty square foot ADU, they would have to come in for a floor area ratio exemption for the fifty square feet.
Correct.
And if they, and the commission could say no to that.
Right.
And we would not be in trouble with state. Okay, actually puts a different light onto what I, I had understood.
But, but they could come in with a thousand square foot ADU that's two hundred square feet over. And we would apply the two hundred, there's nothing to stop them from making a bigger ADU.
But they have to put two bedrooms.
But then, no, but even if they come in with a thou, if their house is maxed out and they come in with a thousand square foot ADU, then two hundred square feet would be.
Part of the FAR.
For a FAR except exemption for two hundred square feet.
All right. So I will defer to, I, I misunderstood that. I thought that we were bound to agree to the eight fifty by state requirements, but it sounds like we're not.
No, it was just to make, eliminate one additional inconsistency in the code.
So that, so I will defer to.
But we, have we already granted any at eight hundred square feet?
Eight fifty or eight hundred?
No, uh, up to the present time.
But the, so the, the, the current law is, is written to allow it was to exempt the first eight hundred square feet for, or from lot coverage, floor area. So we're, we are allowing eight hundred square foot ones to go over floor area. If that's answering your question. So we're, it is, people are getting a bonus.
When they're getting the exception now, when they're asking.
No, so like sixteen Diane Lane, it was, it had an eight hundred square foot ADU that didn't count towards floor area. And then they put in a, an addition over it. So they got to have additional square feet. The ADU would bring them normally over their maximum permitted floor area, but it was allowed because it's an ADU up to eight hundred square feet.
I'm not sure that answers your question.
Well, I, I think if I'm interpreting correctly, it's, we gave everyone eight hundred before. Our choices now are to be consistent and give everyone eight fifty. Or give eight hundred and then the fifty is subject to a FAR exception. Like the incremental fifty above the eight hundred.
Which is what, what we're doing today.
Yeah, that's how I now understand it to be. So I'm okay, I'm okay, I can go either way depend, depending on.
Well, I, I was just pointing out that other people, if they've done eight hundred square feet ones, they could have done eight fifty. They sort of got jipped out of that feat.
So we, we could just leave it at eight hundred, given that we don't have to. But I will point out that when you read the code, it's not that clear cause sometimes it talks about eight fifty and sometimes it talks about eight hundred. So you sort of have to figure out when can you get your eight hundred and when you can get your eight fifty. So I just recommend anyone who wants to do that, work with staff.
I.
Very closely.
I think we ought to just cleanly make it eight fifty and then you don't have to mess around with that in the future.
I mean, I mean, that was one of the options. I, I could go.
Yeah, I agree with Brock.
I, I don't, I guess, I think it's fifty square feet. I mean.
What is that?
Yeah, I can visualize that for the architect in the room.
That's a, a fair sized bathroom. You know, five by ten. Got a tub at the end, one sink, toilet.
I, I'm, I will. I will defer to the commission on how they wanna handle that one. Um, but I can see pros on both sides.
Well, I just, I, I just don't wanna have the state come back for fifty square feet and we're gonna have to talk about all this again. It's just, doesn't.
But it sounds like they not, they won't have an objection to that if we left it at a hundred.
I mean, and I think people understand it. They're just coming in for eight hundred square foot units most of the time, so.
That's cool.
So we, we could leave it at eight hundred.
Yeah. Just needs to go through.
So if we do go, if we do go with the second language, we would need to keep that at eight hundred and not eight fifty. Gosh, this is.
I think if you just make that part of your motion that you would like to keep.
Eight hundred square.
Keep eight hundred square feet is the limit. Or it's something consistent with those state exempt ADUs.
Okay, and then we're gonna, well, I'm proposing that we take out the optional language. You know, in, in the square brackets, if you see that, but again.
Internal connection, allow internal connection.
To allow internal connections. Yeah, I think I'm okay with that.
I, I mean, again, I will defer to.
I agree.
All right.
They're gonna do it anyway.
So. Do you have, do we have everything?
I guess one, so I guess I would say that you would be recommending that the city council adopt the ordinance with one changes to amend the definition of proposed primary residence to delete everything from and include, and includes on.
Right.
Then add garage into the definition of floor area.
Correct.
Allow a floor, essentially a floor area bonus for accessory dwelling units up to eight hundred square feet. And that's, and it's okay if they have an internal connection.
Correct.
Which essentially is maintaining the status quo for, but requiring them to be counted towards floor area. And then um you would like to keep the restricted area language.
Yes.
Is that what I was sort of thinking? That JADUs would have the interior connection, but ADUs would be, are separate. Is that not the case?
Um.
I think JADUs also have an interior connection, right? But ADUs can be.
But JADUs are five hundred square feet.
Right.
But there's a, there's a different set of rules that apply to JADUs. So, so new, something falls within a JADU, it's a.
Well, what I wanna make sure of is we don't, we're not okaying eight hundred square, square foot A, JADUs.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to, or the JDU definition limits it to five hundred square feet.
Right, but you can have attached um at eight hundred square feet, can you not?
Not a JADU, but an attached ADU.
So, but if we're allowing um a connection through, it really becomes part of the house. So then it's like a JADU again, but it's a bigger one.
But you couldn't, right, that's, I mean, that's true. It's a, it's a larger ADU.
I think, I mean, I think that's kind of what we talked about with the you know, caretakers or.
Okay.
All parents, I mean, I don't know. We, I don't, I, I, I think there's not, I mean, a great way to regulate what happens after it's built.
So.
The JADU has to be within the floor area. The required lot coverage, right?
The JDU is only constructed within an existing structure, so it's already floor area and lot coverage when they make it. So they're not really asking, but the, the way the code is proposed, someone could get a five hundred square foot bonus for having created a JADU too.
So, yes, basically, if I were the architect, I would have a, a JADU on the bottom floor and a big master bedroom above and it's part of the house, right? At that point. So only the part that's above the five hundred square feet would count in your FAR. But the JADU underneath would not. But that's, becomes one, you know, it's attached in, in.
Does a JADU have to have an exterior as well?
Yes.
Okay. Separate exterior.
On the other hand, maybe that's okay.
I, it's, I don't, I, I don't know if we're gonna ever come up with the right answer here, so. And there's so much, there's so many variations to think about. I mean, part of me wants to just spend more time on this, but we could just go around and run in circles. And my understanding is we're currently in violation of the state code, so. And my understanding is we're currently in violation of the state code, so.
So I think we should just move ahead. With, with the corrections that we.
Yeah.
We've talked about.
And it, you know, if it's not working, we can change it.
You could always bring it back to.
Yeah.
Change it.
If we, I guess, I guess one way to look at this, if, if what we agree to today, we start having applications and we're like, this isn't right.
And, and you don't see most of the A D Us because they're ministerial, so I would say, you, you rarely see A D Us, you see someone that have come in with new units or, um, on the peel for sixteen Diane, but the majority of the A D Us are coming in, you never see them. And we're happy to share plans with you, but they're, most of them are exempt from planning commission review.
But, but if somebody did have a J A D U on the bottom floor and a master bedroom above that attaches to the house, that would come to us.
Like a brand new addition?
Yeah.
No, well, could potentially be zoning administrator.
You can't. You can't create a J A D U by adding on to the home. It, it, you would have to separate the process to adding on to the home.
Yeah.
And then converting to a J A D U.
But you could add an A D U and then a master bed on top, the same thing.
Okay.
I will say, I think, I'm just looking at.
You can have eight hundred feet instead of five hundred feet.
Well, you raise a good point there, but you're right, I don't know, we can just talk about this soon.
And infinite them.
I mean, I'm looking at Mill Valley and they, they've actually up saying that A D Us can be eight fifty, so they've just gone with the flight eight fifty and not the eight hundred. So I think we're all gonna look at it in slightly different ways. I, I think we should just make a decision now and then, you, maybe we can rely on staff to tell us if, if sunny have a whole influx of, A D Us which clearly are not going to be A D Us or abusing the system, we can revisit theirs. Right?
But yeah, I mean, I, and again, we're not gonna know how people use them, so if they never rent them out, we don't, we won't know that.
Right. But they, but they have to come in through you to get.
To get a permit, right, and we require them to meet the standards, but.
Right.
Yeah, if they have a big French doors, we can't say no.
Right.
And this is something the city council has to pass.
Right.
In their next meeting, right?
Right, or they'll be considering it next for, they, they'll introduce it and then, and then so that people have an opportunity to comment and then it'll come back for another meeting for adoption. So people have another opportunity to comment.
Can, do we have to make a motion and, and what would it be exactly?
Yeah.
Um, I could say again, what I think I could say is, um, you could move to, recommend that the city council adopts, the revisions proposed, the A D U ordinance, including the additional revisions by Natasha Chalmers.
Yes.
With some exceptions, which is to delete after, or under the definition of proposed primary residence, delete and everything from and includes on. Add garage into the definition of floor area. And then for the options for floor area and lot coverage, um, bonuses, allow up to eight hundred square feet for attached, detached and internally created A D Us. And allow them even if they have an internal connection. And I'm just saying that because the options are mixed up on some of these documents, so I don't want to say option one or option two. But we'll pick the one that matches that and then, um, keep the restriction, restricted area language, which I guess we could refer to that section. See, I have it in the agenda, that retain eighteen point two three point zero four zero restricted areas.
But if, if it's eight hundred square feet internal, isn't that, that's the J A D U, is it, which is five hundred square feet, is it not?
It's if they build it new or convert, if I'm understanding, right?
If they build a new or convert.
If they build a new structure, it's an A D U, if they convert an existing structure by adding a bathroom and a kitchen.
Either, so you can convert, let's say you had, a five hundred square foot master bedroom, you could convert it into a J D U or you can convert it into an A D U. It's your choice, the J A D U has more restrictions, like an owner has to occupy one of the units. So, but it, the size doesn't define whether or not it's a J D U or an A D U. It's J D Us just have more restrictions in terms of limited kitchen owner occupancy. Those are primarily the big restrictions. But it's, this, I mean, it's essentially the same as an A D U.
Right. Why would they not just do an A D U?
I, I think most people would do an A D U if that was your first, if that was your first A D U, and then when you want to do your second A D U, then you'd want to convert the first one into a J A D U.
Ah, yeah. Um, does somebody want to say so moved?
I can try. Uh, I moved to accept, uh, text twenty two twenty six, subject to the city council resolution, including the comments from Chair Natasha Chalmers. With the deletion of the primary residence text following and includes, um, including the garage and F A R calculations, allowing for attached, detached and predated, A D Us with external entry points, as well as keeping the restricted language in paragraph eighteen twenty three zero four zero.
And having Natasha Chalmers changes.
I believe I said.
She said that, yeah.
Got it.
You know, I was looking at Mill Valley code, but I assume we got, so you have, the restricted area, you had the, the change in the definition for primary dwelling, we had the, um, the, um, choosing the, and then the A D, the A D, um, the lot coverage. Oh, the garage gets added, is it right, and what was the last two?
Uh, internal.
Yeah.
This point.
Yeah.
Keep restricted language.
Yeah, okay.
Did you have add a bonus A D U up to eight hundred square feet in floor area and lot coverage calculation?
I don't think I said that. So, yes, add eight hundred.
Which is what it is right now.
Yeah, maintain the eight hundred limit.
They want one second then?
I'll second it.
Hey, Commissioner, Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, thank you. May revisit this one day. Um, okay, moving on, um, inclusionary housing and commercial linkage fee studies and amendments in Luxford municipal code. How long do you think we'll need to this, to talk about this one? Is there a lot to discuss on this one? I'm just wondering about how long we should keep this meeting going for.
Yeah, um.
I didn't really have any comments on this.
We'll see, it maybe it's straightforward, I have a presentation, but.
You had questions and comments, so.
No, I, I didn't have, uh, many comments on it, other than, uh, and this doesn't, I, I was just wondering, it has a lot of in lieu of fees.
Correct.
And, um, what I wondered is, how do we use the in lieu of fees? What, how does that get you more low and moderate income housing?
So, um, currently we're using, well, we don't, we aren't collecting in lieu fees because most projects are providing the housing, which I think is a, is good for Larkspur.
Better.
And one of my recommendations tonight was that your recommendation could say, try to keep as much of the existing language in to make that the preference. Um, because I think it's, it's better. Now, if we did collect in lieu fees, we could, for example, buy a condo to replace the ones that we're losing. Um, so we have a number of units that are deed restricted right now that, are managed by Marin Housing, but some of the deed restrictions end, so some of them were thirty year restrictions and are coming to an end, like I think three of them this year. The city could, for example, purchase another condo in that development and put another restriction on and have a new affordable unit, so that would be one easy way to spend sort of smaller amounts of money. Because, um, you know, even some of those condos are seven hundred and twenty five thousand, they're still pricey, but, but something that we might actually, we might get that amount of money. Um, for, if we had larger amounts of money, we could, we could use it to, to leverage, in terms of working with affordable housing developers and contributing some of the cost for an affordable housing project, for example, at, on a city owned site like the parking lot downtown where affordable housing's proposed. So if other, other in lieu fees would prob, most likely be used for larger projects like that. The city could also use it to, for example, like acquire, an apartment building that's for sale and then restrict those units for affordable housing. And all the, I don't perceive that we will ever have that much money because there's just not that much development here. But if we were doing it in combination with the County of Marin or getting, getting, um, grants from the state, there, there might be opportunities to do more with our limited in lieu fees.
Yeah, I, I had just looked at the in lieu fees that were here and, you know, it's like two hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars or something. For a condominium townhouse, which isn't gonna get you, um, into any, anything, anywhere, um, for that kind of money, so.
So part of it's because, um, just like the way they're looking at it to come up with those numbers is, that unit, let's say the city bought it, the unit would be generating re, rental revenue and then, uh, so the city would be making, would be getting some revenue to pay for that unit in addition to having some money.
The city is gonna have to come up with money besides the, the fee that they've, um, gotten.
Yeah, or else, if it was, if we had received money from one in lieu.
Mortgage or whatever. There's a lot of reading which.
And so a lot of the materials are for the studies, um, I, I don't have to go through my presentation if you don't want me to, because it'll be longer, but, um, you don't have to make a decision on, on the fees themselves, that's, the city council is gonna decide that. And so a lot of the study is justifying the fees that are being proposed. So what we're asking you tonight to make a recommendation on is, just the changes to the zoning code, which includes a new chapter that would allow the city council to, adopt a commercial linkage fee, and that would be a fee that's imposed on new commercial construction, so not, not existing commercial that's changed to a different use, but someone actually building an addition or a new building would have to pay, um, an in lieu fee in order to, contribute something to the cost of affordable housing, demand that's generated by that new commercial use. Um, and then the other modifications that are proposed to the zoning chapter, would be to make it consistent with what other jurisdictions are considering for inclusionary housing, so this, uh, we've been working with the housing working group that's made up of the county and five other jurisdictions, on trying to get consistent regulations, because the developers are saying that we, every single jurisdiction has something different and it's, that the developers would prefer to have something more consistent. And then also a number of our fees haven't been updated in a long time, so the studies were coming up with justification for what it, the current fee should be for in, in lieu of providing the housing units, so. Permadera has already adopted the same language, San and Salmo has adopted the same language, County of Marin hasn't, has, adopted those studies but hasn't brought the language forward yet, and so, what we're recommending is just to be consistent with what they're proposing, but there are, it is a change, it requires, um, it may be skip to the, the highlights, um. It would require more very low income units for larger projects. It requires a higher percentage of affordable units for smaller projects, where we have a fifteen percent requirement, it would require twenty. And then it also reduces the applicable development size, so ours does not kick in until five units, but this would, be, this would reduce it to two units, however, the smaller projects would just pay an in lieu fee in proportion to, if, unless they wanted to build like a, they could build a market rate unit, or they could just pay a fee, let's say their fees, they could pay twenty percent of, the in lieu fee, um, instead. And then, um, this, the way it's written currently, fees may be paid in, instead of pay, um, building some of the units, which is where I would recommend at least trying to keep as, as much of our policy that we can, as, as we can, saying that, um, recommending the units be constructed as, as opposed to payment. And then, um, the, there'd be new fees for certain non-residential projects, and then, the in lieu fee would actually be reduced for Larkspur, so currently our in lieu fee, um, let's go back up to it. Our in lieu fee is increased because we have an automatic inflation amount every year, so, the current fee is, ours is like for for sale units, almost five hundred and sixty thousand right now, which is, which is high.
Oh, oh.
Which is, again, another reason why someone would build the unit as opposed to pay the fee. But it also could potentially be discouraging housing development if someone doesn't want to build the unit or pay the fee.
I've got a, I guess, kind of a clarification question, so if somebody wanted to build, for example, like a, a two unit, two houses next to each other or like a duplex, right, would fall into that, so currently they would have to, if they wanted to build two market rate units, they would also have to pay an in lieu fee of.
Twenty, I guess it would be twenty percent of one, the fee for one unit, for one ownership unit. Let me see, go with those fees. Or they could, they could build, they could build a unit, or sorry, did I just pass by this? Or they could build, or sorry, pay twenty percent of the three hundred and seventy seven thousand.
Oh, I see, twenty percent of one.
One unit.
In lieu, one unit in lieu.
Is it my, maybe I'm thinking of that wrong, they need to do twenty percent of, of their existing, their proposed units. But that'll be a fraction of a, that'll be a fraction of a fee to pay, so that, I think it works out the same. Could be getting that confused, I should have an example for that, but.
Twenty percent of two.
It's not, they're not paying for.
Percent of that.
I think it would be like, just, it would be a percentage of the, of the in lieu fee.
Okay.
And is this retroactive?
No, it would only apply to, or it's, I believe it's written, and, or it could be written to just apply to future projects.
I'm just wondering, I mean, like the Magnolia project.
Yeah, I think it is actually written to exclude projects that are already approved, that already have entitlements.
And, and realistically, having been on the housing element committee, um, where, where, I mean, Larkspur Landing is our best shot at probably getting low to moderate income housing. We, we don't have a lot of places to, to do multiple housing units.
Correct.
Yeah, maybe.
Are you lucky, yeah.
Um, oh, go ahead.
No, no.
Oh, I just had another question about how these rules, would kind of mesh with some of the laws that we saw come into play for Magnolia Village, for example, because we kind of just saw this, so.
I was hoping to do an example of that, but the.
Maybe you should just go through.
Yeah. You actually have time to put that in, but that is a great question, because it does, so the way the state density bonus law is written, the lower, right now, um, we require, let's say, ten percent low income, ten percent moderate income. The state density bonus law would allow a certain amount of bonus units based on the ten percent moderate and ten percent low income. Where here is proposed, I think in one of the scenarios, you'd go fifty percent, fifteen percent very low income, that gets them, even more units, so it'll give developers potentially more bonus units under the state density bonus law, than what the city currently requires. However, when we talk about gaming, there's, there, they could do that today, so.
Right.
We're setting them up to get more units, but they could just put in those extra units and get the bonus units.
And they couldn't do, for example, so if they have to put in fifteen percent very low units, they couldn't put in ten and then claim a waiver from our.
Inclusionary?
Our, from this rule and waive their way out of it.
No.
I mean.
They would have to do ours, but they could do, they could go even lower to get more incentives under.
Which they can already do under the state law anyway.
Is this a state requirement?
No, this isn't a state requirement. So the state actually wants a lot of justification to have a requirement like this, because they don't want it to be used, to preclude housing development, so some jurisdictions were making really high inclusionary housing requirements in order to, stop housing development. So now there's laws in place that we have to follow and what's proposed meets those laws. And then the study helps in terms of showing that, what, what's being proposed doesn't, isn't precluding housing development, that it works out financially for developers.
Got it, sorry, interrupted your questions.
No, that was, that was kind of, I had follow up questions if they could use waivers to get around this, but it sounds like that's not the case.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to waive the inclusionary requirements.
And then who drafted the language?
This was actually came from, I think the first, the first adopting jurisdiction was Cordera Madera. So it's from Cordera Madera's ordinance. And I don't believe they got it from somewhere else. I think it started with them.
Okay, and they approved this?
Right.
Okay.
There's this, there's some very minor changes that they made to theirs, but and San Salmo is like identical.
And it sounds like the, the goal is to get the whole of Marin, all the jurisdictions in Marin to have this same identical language.
Yeah, and the other just, um, so I say Cordera and Larkspur actually, or Cordera and San Salmo did something really wise and that they pulled it out into a policy document. So if the county adopts next and something changes, it's easy to change. Um, it just was going to be a, a a lot of work to take all, everything out of our code and put it into a policy document. But there might be something we consider in the future, especially if the county comes out with something that's different. It's essentially just saying something in the code that says we follow our policy document and then the document just can be changed by the council by, under resolution and not have to go through the planning commission and.
And Cordera Madera did that?
Yeah, Cordera did that and same with, the San Salmo never had an inclusionary requirement and they just adopted theirs so that it is just a policy document.
Okay. Are there any other jurisdictions that don't have done it this way and put it into their code?
Um, well, I think there's probably a mix in terms of people who have it in their code. I, I haven't looked that up. But I was going to say that the other people that are, the other people that might, might be doing it with, along with us would be Fairfax, A Sausalito. I have the feeling Santa Fel probably won't change theirs because they just recently changed theirs to lower all their requirements. And I don't think they're going to increase the requirements. But they were also generating a lot of, they have so much more development that they are collecting a lot of in lieu fees and have been able to leverage that a lot because they just have larger projects and.
Has there, I don't know if you guys have, if you guys know, has there been any, from the people that have already adopted this? Are there any stats on more, less, low, moderate?
I don't.
Above moderate income housing?
Been enough time. It's been like within the past year. San Salmo probably adopted this past, maybe last month or somewhere. And then Cordera was about a year ago. I think Cordera's used to be though 25%. So there's, they, they might see that it makes a difference to them because they had a really high requirement before.
What about like Tiburon and Nevada? They, they just.
They just didn't participate and I don't know why. Either they were comfortable with theirs or maybe they did theirs recently and they didn't want to update it again. They just didn't participate in this joint project. Maybe they'll join later.
Okay. So, um, any questions? Do we want, uh, do we need a presentation? I, I guess we're discussing it now.
I feel like you understand it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no one in the audience, but there might be, um, a public member on the phone.
Yep, Mr. Holmes.
Hi, no, I didn't, James Holmes, Larkspur. No, I didn't really have any comments. I think my hand was still raised from the last one. Uh, but, uh, yeah, my guess, my, my only concern would be, uh, if this would, uh, encourage a deviation away from Larkspur's longstanding policy of, uh, trying to require the units, uh, so that there will be, uh, inclusion, uh, rather than, uh, the, uh, rather than the, um, ma- rather than just paying the in lieu fees. I, I have seen cases where developers were, really wanted to pay the in lieu fees. And, uh, we have denied that option and required them to actually have the inclusionary units. And so I wonder if there's anything in here which would, uh, cut that back or give the developers a greater ability to opt for, um, pay, to pay than to actually build than they have now.
I, and I think it does, I think it does erode Larkspur's longstanding language because some of the language is taken out. So my recommendation would be that if you make a motion to recommend in favor of the ordinance, it'd be with, um, a provision that this city council tries to incorporate as much of the existing language that recommends building units over paying the fee, because there's some language in there that we may be able to still retain. Um, I, we have to offer the option of payment of a fee. That's a s- somehow a state law. But it may be that we still can require it to be a discretionary process and subject to the same conditions that we have in the code currently.
Yeah, I, I think that's, uh, a really good idea.
How strong would, I mean, we can recommend all we want. You're saying that there would be.
We could bring different language to the city council that's consistent with that or have the attorney, city attorney look at what we have and
Okay.
See if we could keep as much as possible.
Something stronger than just like an.
Allowing that.
Advising, right? Because that doesn't mean anything.
So what is the current position that we?
The current position would be that they have to go to the city council in order to pay the fee instead. And then they have to provide a lot of justification in terms of why it's not feasible for them to build the units. But it's another step that makes it another, it makes it more difficult and not as appealing to do that.
And that's been, um, that's been struck.
Some of it's being struck out, right? And then some of the provisions also allow a partial in lieu fee payment, but I actually, I think it's a minimal amount and we definitely could use some of in lieu housing funding for certain things. So it didn't, I don't think it would be uh, I think it's for some of the larger projects and then also obviously for the smaller projects that currently don't have any, um, I would have a harder time building a full unit so they can pay the in lieu fee. And I think that makes sense. So it would have to be reworded in order to keep the flexibility for the smaller projects to pay the in lieu fee.
Okay.
Without having to go to council.
All right. So I, I see that language in here. So we would have to bring this back again with further.
I, I would don't think so if that, if it, if you could just make a recommendation, like the city attorney will, will tell me if we have to return again, but.
Okay.
Um, I'm hoping that you wouldn't have to bring it back again.
So I see it's in the subsection D.
And maybe it could be that specific that to keep as much language in subsection D is.
Well, I haven't gone through it to see if there's an, if it's also referenced anywhere else, but I see that this language struck here. Page nine of 13. Oh, with city council consideration of an in lieu housing fee. So it looks like three needs to go back in. D three. And then maybe we just say, and whatever else the city attorney recommends to comply with. Um, I didn't finish that sentence. I guess to come to to keep the restrictions on paying the in lieu fee as in, as is currently drafted.
How, how, I mean, I don't know. How, how many low income and moderate, low, very low moderate income housing, you know, deed restricted type things have been built in Larkspur?
I have a slide for that. So the city adopted the current regulations in 2005. Prior to 2005, there was a number of projects that included affordable housing. And I didn't have time to see how, whether it was just because it was part of the development, um, conditions of approval. Or there was maybe a plan, maybe there's a policy in the general plan that was being enforced. But since 2005, there hasn't been very many projects because there just hasn't been very many how, larger housing projects. Rose Lane included 20 units of how, of 20 units of inclusionary housing. They were required to do 17 and they chose to do six ADUs, um, which is what's required under our current regulations. You have to do two, like you'd have to do two ADUs for every one inclusionary unit. Um, and then Magnolia Village that you just saw had four ownership units. And then there was the Drake's Cove. Uh, that's the, that's the, there are large single family homes right past or east of Marin Country Mart. They paid in lieu fees, but the city also had the opportunity to buy, I believe, land from that same developer. And then, um, an affordable housing developer came in and built 24 affordable housing units. So that was a really good use of the in lieu fee.
And then Rose Lane, was that, when you say rental ADU, so it's not low income?
So they are low income. They're low and they're, I think they're low and very low or at least low income and they're deed restricted. If the person rents it out, they can only rent it for, for lower income rental rates, but they, there are ADUs on single family property, so they don't necessarily have to rent them out.
And they have senior housing too, I think.
The 14 ownership units, um, I think six of those are the, six of those are cottages, six of those are senior cottages and the remainder are condos in that senior housing building.
Okay.
And Magnolia Village, I think, I guess it's, I think it's probably worth pointing out is doing affordable housing. Kind of regardless of what Larkspur laws are saying, they're doing it, I think, I mean, I'm not speaking for the developer, but it seems like they were doing it for the bonuses and the waivers that they got. So that probably has nothing to do with the in lieu fees or inclusionary housing. It's more for the state, right? I mean, that's how I was interpreting that is that they're working to get those waivers and concessions so that they can not follow the.
I thought they were pretty explicit about that, actually.
Yeah, so.
Right.
I guess I just don't want us to be, I mean, we definitely want to, I think, I think we should be encouraging inclusionary housing. I think that paying, building the unit is probably better than paying the fee. But we also don't want to set the bar, I think, as you mentioned, too high that we're not getting any units out of it or any fees, right? Because people, because nobody's building because they can't make the numbers work. So I mean, I don't know. I guess I'm just throwing the idea out there. I, I mean, I'm not an expert on this, but it seems like that
Yeah.
could be an issue and we haven't seen a ton of development since 2010. Granted, Larkspur's small and there aren't a lot of developable, developable sites, but you know, is that is that the reason why we haven't been seeing development? Of low income housing?
Well, no, because it seems like these same rules apply in many other areas.
Well, I think currently we're.
San Rafael.
I think currently we're a little bit more restrictive, right? Or we have a higher in lieu fee.
We have a higher in lieu fee, but we're discouraged people from from paying the in lieu fee anyway. I think it's just, we just don't have house, a lot of housing projects.
Okay.
Um, and then.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Keep in mind that they could always build more market rate units too. So Mag- Magnolia Village could have chosen to build more market rate units to make up for that cost.
Um, but they wouldn't have gotten the waivers and concessions from the state, right?
They still would have gotten waivers and concessions, but they could have even built more. So.
They could have gone more than 20 is what.
Oh, I see. But still had the same.
And I don't think the exclusionary is precluding people. I think we just don't have
Okay.
a lot of demand for building housing here.
Yeah.
So what, what are we, where are we going with this?
I, I don't know. I mean, does anyone have any opinions or questions or I, I, it sounds like we wanted to maybe I'm, I'm hearing what you're, that maybe we don't want to push it too hard on the, making it too difficult to pay the fee. I heard you say that, um, we would like to encourage developers to build the units rather than pay the fee.
Absolutely.
Yeah, for sure. Um, so the exist.
Yes, and that's how we proposed it was that we would, we would agree to this subject to reinserting D three and any other language, which our city attorney encourages development over the payment of the fee.
Yeah, you have to show a good reason.
Low to moderate income.
Do, do you want to make the motion?
No. No, I will.
Would you like to, I'll ask more politely. Would you like to make the motion?
I would move, uh, approval of inclusionary housing and commercial linkage fees, studies and amendments to Larkspur Municipal Code AP 23 dash oh one. With, uh, the caveat that, um, language is inserted to encourage building of, uh, affordable units as opposed to in lieu of fees.
And the reinsertion of.
And the reinsertion of what, what's the.
Section B three.
Section B three, D three. Oh, D, D for David.
Actually, it's eighteen, eighteen twenty-four, oh, four, zero.
Eighteen twenty-four, oh, four, zero. Anything else?
B three.
B three? B three. Second.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Bragstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Capital Improvement Program. I guess moving on to big.
Yeah, I, I don't have a staff report for this and we're just recommending that the planning commission find the city's capital improvement program for fiscal year 2023 and 24 in conformance with the city's general plan based on the staff report.
Does anyone have any questions? Does anyone have any questions for staff on this?
No.
I, I had one question. There were some items in here that said that there were no, there was like no budget. Is that because they just haven't decided what the budget is?
You know, he, the Public Works Director didn't, he's not present, is he? Oh, he's here. He can, he can tell you why.
Oh. Unfunded, sorry, summary of unfunded projects. I just wondered, what does, I didn't know what that meant.
Yeah. So if you're referring to the, uh, this is Julian Skinner. I'm the Public Works Director for the City of Larkspur.
Hi.
I am here. I'll turn my camera on. Um, yeah, at the, the very last document in the CIP is a list of unfunded projects. There are also some projects that are within the five-year capital improvement program that are, um, underfunded or, uh, there is one other that's, um, unfunded, but we know those projects are moving forward. So they're actually included in the CIP. The, the table that's at the end, that is the unfunded projects or projects that have not gone through a full vetting uh, process. Uh, there hasn't been a lot of, um, public outreach, um, about those projects who just, uh, needs that we know we have, and a lot of them are big ticket items dollar-wise. And at the moment, we don't have any prospects for funding. So uh, unless we have a good idea of where they're going to fall in that five-year window, we leave them out of the five-year plan. And we just put them separately on a list of unfunded projects.
Wow, okay. So they're just in the future. Thank you.
In the future, if there's, they're just listed because often if there's a grant opportunity out there, uh, they require that of the project that you're applying for is recognized in your CIP. So, uh, for example, the two fire stations, um, are listed there as needed improvements. Um, so in case there's some grant funding that comes along for the fire stations, we don't have that type of funding, uh, set aside at all for those. So we haven't put them into five-year plan, but we want to acknowledge that that's a, a capital need. Um, and so we capture that need in, in the unfunded, uh, projects table. Um, so that if there is a grant opportunity, we can show, um, that it is a need that's been documented.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Can I, can I ask you what the library phase two is? So the library phase two was at one time, um, the library was, uh, proposed to be about a 20,000 square foot structure. And then due to the constraints, um, of. And then due to the constraints, um, of funding, we're looking at a substantially smaller structure. So the process we're going through now is going to be about a sixty-eight hundred square foot library. And we anticipate there may be some future desire for a library expansion. So we've got a placeholder in there for, um, you know, if the community has a desire to, to have a, a larger square footage, uh, library at some point in the future.
Okay, thanks.
And the twelve carryover projects, is, are those the, the same as, or they fall within the unfunded projects? Or is that something different?
No, the carryover projects are projects that are actually within the capital improvement program. Uh, but they were, they're not new this year. They were included in last year's or subsequent year's CIP. And so the, the capital improvement program is different from our operating budget in that, um, the projects don't start and stop with it, with a fiscal year. The city budget starts over every fiscal year, but the capital program keeps going. So if a project, for instance, was started last year and it's not finished, then it carries over um, into this, into this year. And so e- each year when we come to you with, for general plan conformity, we're only bringing the new projects. Uh, we're not bringing you again the projects that you've seen in, in years past that are, that are carryovers.
That we've already approved.
Correct.
Right, got it. Thank, thank you. Any more questions? It's anyone in the audience, uh? No one? Should we move to a project? Yeah. Uh, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the city's capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty-two-three to twenty-two-four for conformity with the city's general plan.
Second?
I'll second it.
We roll call, please.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you. And then we have two sets of minutes to approve.
Right. April twenty-fifth and May ninth.
Can we have a, unless anyone has any questions, can we have a motion for that, please?
I'll move, uh, approval. Do we do one at a time?
Let's just do both. We're in here, but.
The minutes for April twenty-fifth and the minutes for May ninth.
And the second?
Second.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson?
Yep.
And Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you. Any planning commissioners' reports? Are we all here for the next meeting?
Did, did anybody make it to the touch trucks event?
Uh, no.
Oh, man.
Did you make it?
I have to go.
Yeah. I touched a truck.
We didn't see it, and I know, I know it was very well attended by the number of people that came by.
Or a million little kids running around there.
Every little boy that I know went to that event.
That was me.
And, and older boys.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, so next meeting is, uh, June thirteen, okay. Uh, do we need a motion to adjourn? Do we not, do we not need that? I don't know why we've always done that.
Feels good.
We're done. We are done. Okay. Thank you.